You've heard about
No, they're not.
Yeah, I remember the church there.
Underground church.
Underground.
Uh huh. Because they had a basement.
Oh, right.
They designed.
I know seriously, I know it.
So what's your grandmother?
I'm going to.
Nettie Jackson.
Nettie Jackson. There was a lady named Aunt Nettie and she was.
Like. Well, she died in nineteen thirty two.
Thirty two, okay, but there was another name.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Lives along the Clay Street, not far.
Well, that's heavy blue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so right, so that's.
That's your daughter.
So, I'm telling you, we saw. Yes. Yes. He stayed on fire.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, come on.
Now we have to see when the anniversary is. All the anniversaries of these churches.
They're in spring.
Not all of them fall, but quite a few.
Quite a few of them are.
Right in October.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well. Probably because I've celebrated a few from Jason myself.
Maybe that.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I tried to give us some history back. Um, just that people could kind of. And we'll put this up on our Facebook page.
Yeah, that's good.
Um.
Such a handsome man.
Very distinguished looking.
Yeah, but he.
I wonder what his voice looks like.
We have a picture of him as old, not drawing, but we have a picture of him as old man. Yeah, but he was young, he was in his.
Okay. But he seems like he had height to him.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Uh huh. Yeah.
With AI now, you're working with John Brown. Big stuff.
I know.
AI.
Yeah.
So what's it doing?
I don't know. I think we're gonna do it.
It's like.
It's like things are positive, that's the first thing. It got the positive.
Well, that's the news to my ears, if it's positive, that means that you feel the buzz.
Right.
Yeah. And I'm stressing him, we're moving. Yeah, you know.
How come he's next week?
Exactly.
Oh, Saturday.
Uh huh. Friday is the coronation.
Hi. I'm like. With PSBA, I'm Megan.
I'm Megan.
This is Avani.
How do you like me?
Oric.
Oric.
Kind of like the vacuum.
Yeah.
Director. I'm chief's membership. Member of membership. Yeah, she. Officer. She. My digits changed. It's great. Hi, nice to meet you.
Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five Committee of the Home Meeting of the Harrisburg City School District Board of School Directors, if we can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for.
Sorry about that, I'm in the ground.
The school board met in the executive session on October fourteenth, twenty twenty five to discuss per student personnel and real estate matters. Uh, Madam Secretary, if you can do, please do a roll call vote.
Thank you. Ms. Copeland?
Present.
Ms. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Carter?
Present.
Ms. Hughes?
Present.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Radcliffe?
Present.
Ms. Robinson? Mr. Roy? Mr. Thompson Leader?
Present.
Dr. Suskey?
Present.
We have a quorum this evening.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Uh, we will now move to the approval for of the minutes in the agenda. Um, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September twenty third, twenty twenty five School Board General Business Meeting?
Moved by Ms. Johnson.
Seconded by Brian Carter.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Radcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson Leader?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Hearing majority of yeses, so the motion carries. Uh, we will now move, is there a motion to approve the agenda for the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five Committee of the Home Meeting as presented in Vordocs?
So moved, Danny Hughes.
Seconded, Brian Carter.
Thank you, the motion has been properly moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Radcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson Leader?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Hearing majority of yeses, so that motion will carry. Uh, we will now move to the election of the twenty twenty six PSBA's Officers. So the nominees of the twenty twenty six PSBA Officers are listed on the agenda. These individuals are running unopposed. Do I have a motion to approve this slate of candidates as listed on the agenda?
So moved, Brian Carter.
Is there a second?
Seconded, uh, Autumn Anderson.
Thank you, the motion has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion on the motion. So Madam Secretary, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Radcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson Leader?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Hearing majority of yeses, so that motion will carry for approval. Uh, we will now move to our presentations for this evening, Dr. Henry.
Yes, we have two presentation tonight. Um, our first one will be by Ms. Keys.
Good evening, good evening, good evening, everyone. Uh, it is an honor and a privilege to be here with you this evening. Um, I do greetings, um, regarding a special project that we had the opportunity to work on, um, for the Harrisburg School District in collaboration with the William Howard Day, uh, Committee, uh, made up of four individuals that, uh, you will see a video presentation from here momentarily. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the individuals that participated in this, um, educational video that we hope will be used across our district, not only this year, but in years to come. Mr. Caleb Jackson, who is a former school board member here in the Harrisburg School District, and he is one of Harrisburg's foremost historians. Let's give him a warm welcome. Then we had Ms. Yvonne E. Hollins. She's part of the William Howard Day Committee. Mrs. Hollins, thank you so much for your contribution to the video that's gonna be showed in this evening. Then we had Dr. Sharon Williams, an educator, technologist, and she is the founder of Kindred Spirits, a genealogy work group here in central Pennsylvania, and she's also a member of the William Howard Day Committee. Let's give Dr. Sharon Williams warm applause. And last but certainly not least, Dr. Todd M. Mealy. He is an educator, a historian, and a author, uh, and a phenomenal researcher about the life of Dr. Day, Dr. Todd M. Mealy. Before I introduce this evening's guest, I just want to give you a little bit of background. How many of you know who Dr. William Howard Day is? I see a few hands on the board, absolutely, yes. And so we know that, uh, he was an educator, he was an abolitionist, and he was an orator, an editor, uh, certainly a trailblazer. Dr. of the Harrisburg School Board, which he was elected to in eighteen seventy eight as the first African American member, uh, to ever serve three terms on a school board, not just here in Harrisburg, not just in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, but anywhere in the land of America. Dr. Day served as superintendent of black schools in the states of Maryland and Delaware, and in the Freedmen's Bureau from eighteen sixty seven to eighteen seventy one. And another little tidbit that I'll share with you, he built one hundred and forty schools, hired more than one hundred and sixty teachers, and enrolled about seven thousand students. Wow, what a legacy that we're gonna honor and celebrate as we highlight the bicentennial of Dr. William Howard Day. Now to present a special proclamation, I'd like to introduce our friends from PSBA, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give a warm welcome to Ms. Megan Orec and Ms. Yvani Torres.
I'm a little, so we'll move this down. Good evening. As mentioned, I'm Megan Orec. I'm PSBA's Chief Membership Officer. With me, I have my colleague Yvani. She's our senior, um, member experience coordinator. Um, and it's my pleasure, our pleasure, to join you this evening on behalf of the entire association, um, to recognize a truly historic milestone, the two hundredth birthday of Dr. William Howard Day, a pioneering educator, civic leader, and trailblazer in public education. Dr. Day's legacy is deeply rooted in Harrisburg, where he made history as the first African American elected to a school board in Pennsylvania, ultimately serving as president of this very board here in eighteen ninety one. His unwavering commitment to equal education and justice laid the foundation for inclusive public education, not only in Harrisburg, but across the Commonwealth and the nation. As we reflect on this remarkable contributions, we are reminded of the power of leadership grounded in purpose. His legacy lives on through the William Howard Day School and through the district's continued dedication to educational excellence and the opportunity for all students. Tonight, PSBA is proud to present this proclamation in honor of Dr. Day's bicentennial. It is a tribute not only to his life and work, but also to the values he championed, values that continue to guide our collective mission in public education. Thank you for allowing us to share in this moment of remembrance and recommitment. It is our hope that this proclamation serves as a lasting symbol of Dr. Day's enduring impact and the bright future we are building together. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Dr. Henry and Board President and Vice President, would you please come and take a photo, uh, with PSBA? Um, we do wanna thank, uh, the CEO of PSBA, Mr. Nathan G. Mainz, who had planned to be here this evening, uh, but was not feeling up to it, a little bit under the weather, and they have their big statewide conference coming up, so we want him to be ready for that. So please give our, uh, thanks and appreciation to your CEO. All right? So we'll have the picture kinda right here. Olivera, why don't we kinda? Yes, we'll move this out of the way. So, yeah, so, um, can we have?
Oh, no.
Yeah. And then can I have someone on this side? Hello. And then whoever's gonna hold the proclamation in the middle.
Did she hand it to you?
Your board president, you're gonna hold it? Okay. Whatever, whatever it is. Okay, you can hold it. Okay. And step forward a little bit so that the flag doesn't. And so, yeah. And there you go, you have him.
Yep.
All right, stay, stay right there. Here we go.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm glad.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so very much.
I'll let you get it together. Thank you so much, Ms. Orec and Ms. Torres.
We wanted to invite our guests to remain for this very special five-minute video that was put together by Mr. Olivera and myself. And Mr. Adam Nornhold, he will roll the video. Thank you all so very much. Hello, Harrisburg School District. We are pleased and excited to celebrate the life and the living and the legacy of Reverend Dr. William Howard Day, celebrating his two hundredth birthday.
Greetings. I am Caleb Jackson, Press President of the Harrisburg School Board. And today we're honoring this historic marker for Dr. William Howard Day that was placed here in July twenty second, nineteen ninety seven. Dr. Day was the first African American on the Harrisburg School Board and its first president in eighteen ninety one to eighteen ninety three. This marker was dedicated, as I said in nineteen ninety seven, by the African American Museum of Harrisburg. This will be the two hundredth anniversary of the birth of Dr. William Howard Day, October the sixteenth, eighteen twenty five.
Hello, I am Mrs. Yvonne Eccles Hollins. I grew up here in the Howard Day Projects. When you are in the Harrisburg area and you speak to anyone, you will find that their roots began here in the William Howard Day Projects. I can name, I can go to each row and name the various people, and that's what we're going to be doing on October the sixteenth at two o'clock. We are going to have all of the alum come back to Harrisburg, to Downey School, and also to the William Howard Day Projects. And we're gonna do a roll call, and we're gonna have representation from every family. And we're going to encourage every family to adopt one of the twenty-two classrooms at Downey Elementary School. I'm very excited that we are able to celebrate the two hundredth birthday of Reverend Dr. William Howard Day, and not just celebrate, but also to educate our children and our community. I believe that he would say, keep my legacy alive by doing what you are doing, educating our children, educating our community, be a true community, supporting and loving one another.
My name is Dr. Sharon Williams, and I'm here to speak on four locations in Harrisburg that are named in honor of William Howard Day. The four locations I will speak on are the William Howard Day Homes, the Lincoln Cemetery, where he is interred, the William Howard Day Cemetery, and the Commonwealth Monument Project, which is titled Gathering at the Crossroads. The collaboration resulted in the One Hundred Voices Project. With the monument project, there was a dedication ceremony in twenty twenty. We hope to bring people's attention to it now so that they will visit. The installation is on the grounds of the state Capitol Complex, and it honors Harrisburg's historic Old Eighth Ward, as well as the ratification of the three Reconstruction Amendments, which ended slavery, established birthright citizenship, and gave American men the right to vote. Later, the Nineteenth Amendment, which enfranchised women, is also honored in that monument.
So, hi, my name is, uh, Todd Mealy, and I wrote the Signature Biography of William Howard Day back in two thousand and ten, which I had written, um, a, uh, monograph, a small book, on the history of the complicated relationship between, uh, white and black abolitionists. In that story, what I was doing is, uh, discussing, um, the objectives by white abolitionists and black abolitionists. Um, and really their goals were to abolish slavery, but they had different visions for the future in, in, in America after slavery. And Day showed up at the end of that story, uh, 'cause his arrival to Harrisburg, um, his first visit to Harrisburg in the fall, October of eighteen sixty five, uh, then he returns a month later, and then he's in and out of the city between eighteen sixty five and eighteen seventy three, where he eventually settles there permanently for the remainder of his life. One of the last speeches that Day gave, uh, it was his People's College speech. He saw public schools as the people's college. You know, it was that, that public school is designed to serve all people, high and low, rich and poor, um, black and white, brown, um, it serves all people. Class shouldn't matter.
Right.
Um, skin pigmentation shouldn't matter, gender shouldn't matter. Well, he saw schools as, uh, as democracies in action.
Say that again.
He saw schools as democracies in action.
Democracies in action.
Yeah. And, and, um, you know, I think that's a central message that we should continue to give to educators, 'cause he certainly did it up to the day that he died. I wanna give a big thank you to Dr. Henry, uh, who's committing some time here, uh, for us to educate, uh, the students of, of Harrisburg School District about William Howard Day. Uh, and I think he shares a vision that Day had, you know, which is, uh, how important education is to one's future. Um, and I hope the students in the school district see the same vision that Dr. Henry has. I wanna join the Harrisburg School District in wishing, uh, William Howard Day a, uh, happy, uh, two hundredth birthday.
I'd like to echo what Dr. Mealy shared. Dr. Henry, thank you for allowing Sean and I to dedicate so much of our time for the past several weeks to bring this project to fruition. We appreciate your leadership and your support on our, our initiative to honor the bicentennial birthday of Dr. William Howard Day. And I'd be remiss if I did not share on behalf of the committee, there is an initiative, uh, where they're fundraising, uh, to, to maintain the monument, because even though it's on the Capitol, uh, complex grounds, the Commonwealth does not maintain the monument, which features, uh, T. Marsh Chester, uh, William Howard Day, uh, Ms. Compton, Jacob Compton, and Catherine Elizabeth. There, there's a lady there. Frances Harper. Frances Harper, yes. So, uh, there is an initiative. If you'd like more information about that and how to support it, I'm sure that anyone from the committee, Mrs. Hollins, uh, Mr. Caleb Jackson, Dr. Sharon Johnson, or Dr., uh, Dr. Sharon Williams, or Dr. Todd Mealy can give you more information. And I, lastly, would like to say, we included educators in this project from the Harrisburg School District, from Middletown School District, Boiling Springs School District, Lancaster School District, and Central Dolphins School District. So once again, thank you all so very much. Save the date and join us on October sixteenth at Downey Elementary School, where we're going to have another observance to remember Dr. Day at two PM, from two to two thirty, right, Mrs. Hollins? All right. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Keys. Amazing job. Thank you and, uh, your team for putting that video together. Great job. All right, and we have a second presentation, um, to the board. Um, a couple of months ago, we shared our enrollment study. Um, so today we have the Pennsylvania Economic League here to present the final of that study to the team. Um, you will see the attached, uh, study, um, and their presentation will be presented. We can share that out as needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, hi, everybody, I'm Vinnie Canizera, I'm the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania Economy League. Um, I have with me Patty Moorhead, who is our Director of, uh, Data, Data and Financial Analytics. Uh, just a... There we go, just a little bit about us. Uh, we are a nonprofit, nonpartisan, local government think tank. Uh, we've been around for ninety years. We've done, uh, I have, I have over two hundred and twenty, I don't know the last time that was written, it's probably more like two fifty at this point, enrollment studies since nineteen eighty six. Uh, industry, industry standard is, uh, enrollment projections are usually within five percent. Uh, ours are generally in a one to two percent range. Um, we provide all kinds of assistance to municipalities across the state, but also to school districts. Um, so if there's anything else that you all ever need, we're definitely here to help and support. Um, previous enrollment, this is our third enrollment projection for the district. Um, and as you can see, we've been pretty close, um, throughout the years. Um, with all that being said, our five-year projections are generally more accurate than our ten-year projections, just because as time goes on, things can change. Um, but as you can see, um, based on the last couple of studies, we have been, um, well within the range of what the actuals are. And Patty, please jump in if, if I'm missing anything, too.
One thing is, this is our one for you.
Oh, thank you.
Our third one was done, um, in twenty twenty one. Our third one was done in 2021-ish. And on that one, we're pretty close. We're in like 1%, 1%, 1 and 1 and 1/2%. So.
Good, thank you. This is our projections versus the actuals. So with October 1 numbers in, we can actually see what enrollment looks like in the district. We were within 1.8% of what the actual enrollment was, or I guess is. You can see it changes a little bit by the various grade levels. But overall, we were within 120 students of what the actual enrollment count was for the year so far.
So our projections for this year are higher than they were in our previous, our last study. Our last study, we were at 6210. With the new information over the past several years, we've bumped those up, but Harrisburg's numbers are still below what we had projected.
Our process. So we look at a whole bunch of demographic information within the district. So not just schools, but actually the population of Harrisburg and the area that makes up Harrisburg School District. So the city of Harrisburg, this is trends in population, birth rates and birth patterns, changes in migration, housing, if there's new development or new housing units that are being built, historic trends, and then also the grade level progression. And all of that gives us an indication of where the district is heading. With that, in population trends, it's been relatively flat since about 2020. There was, the peak was in 1950. It's decreased since then. But it's remained relatively stable from about 2000 through 2020. When we are considering population by age, it's a little bit of a different story. Under 5 populations have increased. There's been a decrease in the 5 to 17 count from 2000 to 2010. But again, that increased from 2010 to 2020. This is important because it gives us an indication of what the actual student population will be. When we look at just the overall population counts, it gives us an idea of how many students should be enrolled in the district, and what some of those projections will be of who will be enrolled in the district. And that gets us into, again, some of our growth patterns. So while overall population has decreased, I'll say more importantly, births have also decreased. So there's less kids being born within the Harrisburg School District that will eventually matriculate into the school system. There we go. Housing trends. There has also been a decrease in housing units within the district. With this, there's a decrease in enrollment, and all of this is an overall decrease in the pupils per unit. This is one way to give an estimation of any new housing projects that are going on, or housing development, of what is the potential number of students that we can estimate out of those new housing units. When we look at these numbers, if it was 1, then that would be for every 1 housing unit, there is 1 student that is enrolled in the district. So less than 1 gives us an idea that for every 1 housing unit, there is less than 1 child that's actually enrolled in the district. This is a graphical representation of it. You can see that it has gone down over time. We start in 1970 to get a really good historical projection, historical understanding of where we are. It started at 0.415, and the 2324 numbers are 0.259. So the relatively significant decrease in the last 50 years. Historical projections. So again, the best indication of where the district is going is based on where we have been already. So what the total number of enrollment has been, and also enrollment by grades. So when we take a look at the historic projections, we see that there is a... There we go. Yeah. We see that there's a dip in 2016, 2017 school year. Regardless, it has remained relatively stable. This is mostly just based on the scale. It's going from 6,000 to 6,700. The largest difference has been 400 students. So not a huge difference when you have 6,000-plus enrollment throughout the district. But there are some ups and downs as we go through. Enrollment by grade level. Again, this is, the previous slide was the entire district, and now this is looking at enrollment by grade level. So K through 5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 12. By grade, the largest decrease has been in K through 5, dropping by 385 students. The largest increase was in 9 through 12, with an increase of 273 students.
The K through 5 numbers correspond to the birth rates as well. The birth has gone, as we said in that other slide, that the birth rate has gone down. So that's where you're...
There's less students in the district.
And the big drops in, the big drop in 2021 COVID.
Again, graphical representation, it's relatively stable for each grade. You see slight increases and decreases throughout the last 10 years. Okay, this is the meat, right? This is now how we actually got to our projections today, and going forward for the next 5 and 10 years. The two biggest factors are birth patterns and grade level progression. Birth patterns give us an indication based on how many people, how many are born within the district, and then combine that with how many of those students are actually going to be enrolled within the district. These are based on actual trends and information. And really, because we're able to use hard data and hard evidence, it gives us the best idea and allows our model to be as accurate as possible. When we are looking at the ratio of kindergarten to entries at birth, a ratio of less than 1 means for every 1 child born within the school district, less than 1 child is actually enrolling within the district. If that number was higher than 1, it's probably an indication of some migration into the school district. If it is 1, and we see every so often, school districts with a number of 1, that is, every child that is born actually enrolls within the public school system. This is important, again, because it gives us a projection for years out. Students that are born today, it gives us an estimation of how many of those students will actually matriculate into kindergarten for years, 4 years on. Yeah, please, yeah.
Can you go back to that slide? I just want to point out that in Harrisburg, for every 2 live births, only 1 student enrolls. The birth rate's going down, and you're only getting half of the children that are born in Harrisburg.
The other students are going to be going to private schools, parochial schools.
Being out, you know, once they get to school. And we do see, you know, that is, we do see that sometimes in urban districts.
The second metric is the progression ratio. And this biases with insight into how students are actually moving through the grade levels and moving through the school system. So it's a student moving from K to 1, and 1 to 2, and so on. It allows us to estimate the number of students that will be enrolled the following year. Numbers, again, less than 1 gives us an indication that not all students are progressing. Numbers that are over 1 is that more students are going to be progressing as we go forward. So we take all of that information and create 5-year averages and 3-year averages, look at the progression ratios, use the highest and the lowest, and try to get the best idea of where that sweet spot is, of what the actual numbers are. We can't just say it's going to be the highest, or it's going to be the lowest, because those could be outliers for any number of reasons. So it takes a bit of the art and the science, then, of figuring out what the actual numbers are going to be. And with that, this is where we get into our actual enrollment.
For our enrollments, we used a 5-year birth rate average, a birth to K, a 3-year average, and the progression ratios based on the 3-year average of how students have progressed through the district. So that would have been the last, 2425 would have been the last year of that. So 2425, 2324, 2223.
With that, we have our projections for the 202425 school year through the 3435 school year. Overall, there is a slight decrease of 443 students. It's going to change year to year. But overall, in the district, there's, we are projecting a decrease in students.
The star on the 242526 there is to let you know that those are our projections, not your actual numbers. We did these projections back in July.
Yeah. And again, our projections were about 120 students, students off. We also break it down by grade level. And again, we don't want to just say this is what it is overall, but allow the school district to make some decisions for specific grade levels. So again, K through 5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 12. Some years and some grades go up a little bit more. Some will go down a little bit less. But overall, again, we're seeing a slight decrease over the next 10 years. Again, the graphical representation, I will say, there is a slight decrease. It's still pretty stable. There aren't huge dips or jumps anywhere within the next 10 years. So it's going down, but it's not such a significant number. I'm going to give this to you, Patty.
So we wanted to give you some alternative projections. Down the middle is the preferred, the projection that we used overall. That's the one we think it's going to be. You'll see, like, there's slight differences there. Those are based on maximum number of births, minimum number of births. Now, the big jumpers there, those are if we took the highest progression rate for every single grade, how many, how many students would you get if they all progressed at the highest rate? And with that, it came out to 9731. How about at the end, for the lower end, if your progression rates were the lowest, it would be 3647. So you have, that's a pretty big range. That's a $6,000, or yeah, $6,000. 6,000 student range. We don't, we think you're going to be somewhere in the middle, probably closer to the preferred. Well, we think you're going to be at the preferred, that's 3-year averages.
We like giving that range, just so you know. If, for whatever reason, birth rates do shoot up, and they are at that highest rate, and the same with grade level progressions, you could see a huge jump in enrollment. On the same, on the flip side, if there is a huge drop in birth rates and grade progression, you could see a precipitous drop. Neither one of those are likely. And that's why the averages are more important than anything else. And that gives us a number of projections that are right down the middle. And I think that is everything.
But what we will say, which we always put the caveat in, you know your district the best. Your best information is going to come from your students that are already enrolled, and, you know, polling them, seeing what, how many students are in the household, if there's more coming in, looking at the housing. But, you know, be cautious with the housing, because you're only at, you know, 1 student for every 2 housings, and housing turns over. So where you may have had a big growth in one area 5 years ago, maybe by the time this new area comes on, those kids that came in 5 years ago have aged out. So that's why we like to go with the, you know, averages on the enrollments and progressions.
Yeah. And we've started to make the recommendation to all school districts that we're working with, if you don't do so already, to do a survey of students and of households to get an idea of how many students are not currently enrolled, but will be enrolled in the coming years. That's really going to be your best place where future numbers are going to come from, because households are going to be able to tell you, yes, I have, you know, 2 or 3 kids at home, and they will be enrolling in the school district in XYZ number of years. That's our presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I just had a couple questions, and I'm not sure if these are the right questions for you or not. But so with the increase in 9 to 12, do you know why? Was there a baby boom back when they were younger? Or why is that number increasing?
I would think that's more students transferring in. I don't know. I'm not really sure. We didn't get a chance. It might be more for the district enrollment people. They may know.
Okay, okay.
Why they do the 9 to 12.
Got it. And then, do you have any insight into how we compare to other school districts around us? Are we atypical, or?
Yeah, a lot of districts are having pretty steep drops in enrollment. I am not seeing that here. There's, I think, the last couple we've done, there's only been 1 that has actually had an increase. And I mean, we've done this, I think this is our fifth this year. So, I mean, it's pretty on par with other school districts.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate you providing this information to the board. Again, we thank you for this information. I know we've been able to look through it. I was hoping for better news, but you know, we're going to deal with what you gave me. So we would definitely move forward. And again, appreciate you.
Yeah, absolutely.
There is more detailed information in the report. We do go down to the school level to try and see where the growth is. There's some background on the housing units where they're, you know, from what I could glean from different sources, that where the growth in housing units and stuff is.
I will say too, if anybody has questions, if you look through the report, Dr. Henry has our information. And please feel free to share it with anyone. I'm happy to answer any questions. I live right down the road, so I can come back and talk to you all at any time, too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's for the board. This is, you can speak to them all, because it's for the board to ask questions at this time. So if you got questions, I mean, you can always talk to them outside.
Sure. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for the presentations this evening, and we will now move to our public comment for this evening. Madam Secretary, we are ready to begin the public comment period of the agenda for agenda items only.
Thank you. We have one public comment this evening from Mr. Caleb Jackson. And if you could state your name and address for the record. And just a quick reminder, you are allotted 3 minutes.
Good evening. My name is Caleb Jackson, and I was once on the school board. After I took, I left the school board in 1999, and took a job as a regional technician for Census 2000. And with the experience I have with Census 2000, I would ask, why didn't your program show any diversity? And your numbers that you have? Well, I'm sure diversity is important in the district, and especially in districts like ours. What's increasing and what's decreasing? Correct选项 is dependent on it. So I'm just surprised that you don't have diversity. And maybe you have it and didn't do it for this presentation. And I guess if Dr. Henry looks further down, you may have. And I guess if Dr. Henry looks further down, you may have, you'd be able to show him diversity in the district. But is the Hispanic population growing or not? School board members, you could ask those questions. You can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caleb Jackson.
That concludes the public comment section of the agenda, Board Polit- Unfortunately, you have to sign up by five fifty-five. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the Office of Academics for New Business Items, Dr. Henry.
Okay. The administration recommended approval of the agreement between Harrisburg School District and Amelia Lynch to provide bilingual speech evaluation services at a cost of eleven hundred dollar per bilingual speech evaluation as needed by the district. This item will appear on the October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? So hearing no further discussion on the motion, we'll move this item to our October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five meeting for consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item, please.
The administration recommended approval of the agreement between the Harrisburg School District and the Learn Without Tears to provide training on the use of Learn Without Tears at a cost of thirty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. This item will appear on the October twenty-eighth, uh, twenty-twenty-five Board Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion, um, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Dr. Henry, could you provide a little bit of an overview of what this, um, item is for the public?
So this program is a very unique program. It's, uh, one of the things that a lot of our pre-K students are using to start learning to teach how to write. Um, so this is a very great, um, uh, program that, um, a pre-K student would be using to learn how to write and then get them ready for kindergarten and future.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this motion? Okay, hearing no further discussion on the motion, we will move this to our October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, uh, meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item, please.
The administration has recommended approval of the agreement between Harrisburg School District and Central Susquehanna Intermediate Unit. The district is providing access to the Infany Company, uh, Campus Database to the Recruiting Coordinators to fulfill the state document providing space needed for migrant summer camp for the summer session, and provide C S I U M E P staff, enrollment list of weekly basis for program recruitment purpose at the Welcome Center at no cost to the district. This item will appear on the October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing no further discussion on the item, we will move this to our October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, meeting for, uh, meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration has recommended approval of the agreement for Title One Non-Public Service between the Harrisburg School District and the Capital Area Intermediate Unit, the C A I U, for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year funding amount for Title One Fund at the cost up to four hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four, forty-five dollars. For Title Two, it could cost up to forty-fourth, uh, million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, uh, hundred, I'm sorry, forty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, eighty-eight dollars. Uh, Title Three at a cost of ten thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and three cents, and Title Four at a cost of thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-two cents. This item will appear on the October twenty-eighth Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on these, on the motion?
Madam President, just to note, I believe that should have been a decimal point instead of a comma for Title Two. I don't believe it's forty-four million, correct? Forty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Okay. Can we please note the decimal point correction? Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Susky, for that. And Madam Secretary, do you have it noted?
Noted.
Thank you. So is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing no further discussion on the motion, this motion will be moved to our October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration has recommended approval of the agreement between Harrisburg School District and W I T F Penning for a purpose of presenting and exploring the classroom for a pre-K count student at a cost of twenty-two hundred dollars. This item will appear on the October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? Yeah, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you. Um, Dr. Henry, is this a new program for the school district, or have we done this previously?
This will.
I'm not sure if we, I'm not sure if we've done this particular one, but I know that we have worked with the W I T F with our pre-K counts program before, yes.
Um, do we know if there's any like data on this particular program and sort of like effectiveness or?
I could certainly look into that.
Thank you so much.
And to your question, um, Ms. Anderson, I think one of the thing that, I, I think we mentioned this before, we do need to start collecting data from our pre-K students, so we can start seeing and start projecting how these kids are going to perform in a few years. Um, so we can make sure we are supporting those students.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the motion? And, uh, my only question was, uh, regarding the, the classroom size, because I know currently we do have, uh, four pre-K classrooms, and the maximum number are at seven, seventeen, but according to this, uh, agreement, it's showing for twenty students, uh, plus one. So if we can just provide any feedback to that with, especially with, uh, cost effective for the district.
Okay. Okay. We'll look into that then.
Okay. So thank you. Hearing no further discussion on the motion, so we will move this to our October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, uh, consent agenda for approval. Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration has recommended approval of the agreement between Harrisburg School District and the W I T F Penning Education for the purpose of presenting a early learning parent engagement event for students and family at a cost of, uh, fourteen-ten. This item will appear on the October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five Board Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? And again, I just have a question. I just went to, if you can give a little elaboration just on the family engagement, a piece of how that would support the family around this, uh, program.
This will.
Well, family engagement is a big part of the pre-K counts program, so there's many events that they do around family engagement. Um, and like I said, I'm not exactly sure if we partic- if we participated in this particular one, but W I T F has been a partner of ours through the pre-K counts. So I'm not sure if this is the first time I'll find one if we do this. Um, but they do do quite a few family engagement, um, programs with the pre-K counts, um, program here in Harrisburg School District. So it's just trying to get the families, um, aware, the families, and even we, we encourage them not even to just bring their pre-K students, but even if they have younger children coming up as well.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? So hearing no further discussion on the motion, uh, we'll move this forward to the October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, uh, meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration has recommended approval of the M O U between the Harrisburg School District and Dauphin County Library Assistant to Provide Assembly with the feature of author of Downey Elementary School, Story Walk, C B W, at no cost to the district. This item will appear on the October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Again, hearing no further discussion on the motion, so we'll move this forward to our October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five meeting, uh, for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration has recommended approval of the agreement between the Harrisburg School District and the Y M C A East H C E to provide class to the Harrisburg Catholic Elementary for a total cost of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. This item will appear on the October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five Board Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Um, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, Harrisburg Catholic Elementary is at a private institution. Can you explain more?
Ms. Thompson, Dr. Thompson.
Yes, it's a non-public. We are serving nineteen non-publics that are in our jurisdiction, and that is one of our non-public schools. They are a part of the B S C A grant, and their allocation allows them to be able to utilize this funding source for that activity. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing no further discussion on this motion, uh, we will move this forward to the October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration has recommended approval of the agreement between Harrisburg School District and the Girl Scout in the Heart of Pennsylvania, the G S H P A, um, to complement the district curriculum and teach girls how to be leader in and out of the classroom from October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five until August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven, at no cost to the district. This item will appear on the October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? Uh, Mr. Thompson Leader.
I'd love to hear more about how this would happen in our classrooms. I think it could be an excellent program.
This will.
Yes, it's actually going to start at, um, Ben Franklin. They're going to do this. Um, so I'm not as sure what their schedule is, but I know that the principal at Ben Franklin has been working closely, um, with the Girl Scouts to try to work this out, because it may, um, also they may offer things after school as well. Um, but yeah, they're pretty excited about getting this going.
And, um, to, uh, Dr. Thompson Leader, Mr. Thompson Leader, one of the thing I was excited about when I got here was having an opportunity to meet with our Girl Scout representative, and they've been very excited about coming back and getting into the district. And some of the work we know we need is some work around supporting a lot of our, uh, female students. Um, so to be able to have this program come in and support our kids in the elementary, that's a wonderful, um, partnership.
Absolutely.
In addition, the Girl Scouts actually worked with, within our Twenty-First Century Grant this summer. So they were instrumental in working with our girls over the summer as one of their extracurricular activity.
I thought I remembered seeing something about that, yes.
Yes. And they provided a lot of free cookies.
Uh, Ms. Anderson?
Um, thank you, Madam President. I just want to make a comment that, um, how appreciative I am as a board member to see that this program is free and that the Dauphin County Library System program is free, especially given our, um, you know, coming out of recovery and, and being in receivership. So thank you to our, our partners on that.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there any further discussion on this item? So again, hearing no further discussion on the item, we will move it to, forward to our October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration has recommended approval of the S A P quote for the Harrisburg School District for renewal of license for career aspiration, Paws, and Jobland in Choice Three Sixty, an amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred and eight dollars for a period of September first, twenty-twenty-five to August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. This item will appear on the October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, um, Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this item? Uh, Dr. Since Thompson.
I am loving that mistake everyone's making. Thank, thank you, Dr. Thompson. I believe they're just going with that. Um, all that aside, on this one, oh, I just lost my train of thought, of course. Back there. No, I'm kidding. Oh, um, do we have any data, since this is renewal? Do we have any data on the effectiveness or survey responses from students as to whether or not they found utilization of this useful in the classroom? Because as a parent, I haven't.
Ms. Palmer?
Thank you. Madam President, could, could I just make a comment there? For those that are unfamiliar, uh, Paws and Jobland is an elementary-aged, um, computer program that helps students to understand various career, um, options. And Choices Three Sixty is the program that's used at the secondary level. So it's really more of a career exploration. So I don't really know what kind of data we might have, except maybe how many students have logged on to the program. Uh, I'm uncertain. Maybe the administration can explain how the program is used. But I am familiar with it, and it is a, a very, um, popular program used in a lot of school districts, again, to help students to see what various career options are out there for them.
So I think what we need to do first is, uh, move forward, try to figure out how many, uh, students are ass- assessing this program, so we can start using it as a data point.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Susky. Is there any further discussion on it, on the motion?
Yes, just to add on, uh, what Dr. Susky said, can the, um, can the administration just kind of elaborate a bit about how it's used?
Is that for now?
Yeah, Ms., Ms. Palmer.
So it's, it's, um, the students log on and do it, it's, it's done on the computer, um, and so, you know, they go on and fill it out. It, it collects, um, you know, what they're interested in, things that might be appropriate as they move forward in planning for post-secondary.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any other further discussion on the motion? So hearing no further discussion on this motion, uh, we will move this forward to our October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five meeting, uh, the consent agenda for approval. Dr. Henry, next item.
Okay. Uh, the administration has recommended ratification of the quote from Celeste Education Services for additional fifteen virtual school license for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year in an amount of eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Um, this item will appear on the October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? So hearing no further discussion on this motion, we will move this forward to our October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration has recommended approval of a field trip to the J F K High School Civil Spring Maryland on November eighth, twenty-twenty-five, in an amount of two hundred dollars for registration and eleven hundred dollars for transportation to attend a drill meet for twenty students in Sharper Row. This item will appear on the October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five Board Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? So again, hearing no further discussion on the motion, we will move this forward to our October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration has recommended ratification or approval of the time away from work request for professional development as attached to the agenda. These item will appear on the October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? So again, hearing no further discussion on the motion, we will move this to, forward to the October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration has recommended approval of the waiver of expulsion hearing agreement for the following student as an immediate action item.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Henry. So do I have a motion to approve the waiver of expulsion hearings agreements as a needed action item as presented?
So moved.
Is, is there a second?
Second, Brian Carter.
Thank you. The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? So again, hearing no further discussion on the motion, Madam Secretary, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Radcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson Leader?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Hearing majority of the yeses, so that motion will carry for approval. Uh, we will now move to the Office of Human Resources, Resources for New Business Items. Dr. Henry?
The administration has recommended approval of the October fourteen, twenty-twenty-five Personnel Agenda. This item will appear on the October twenty-eighth Board Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? So hearing no further discussion on the motion. So hearing no further discussion on the motion, we will move this forward to October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend approval for the creation and elimination of the following position per Board Policy three oh one. This item will appear on the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. And is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Hughes?
Um, uh, would you mind explaining some of the, uh, rationale for the changes?
Ms. Lane?
Certainly. The changes related to H V L A, it is due to a decrease in student enrollment. Um, and then for the Secretary of Early Learning, we are reassessing different workloads within our departments. And so we found that we could eliminate that position. And for items four and five, we moved a food service worker position that's still within our payroll.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Uh, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, just a clarifying question. When you said that you moved a food service worker, is that you're saying that for number four where it's eliminated? Number five?
Yeah, it's really, in five, um, we actually moved the, the position from one building and placed it in another. We have to track it for position control purposes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there any further discussion on the motion? So again, hearing no further discussion on the motion, we will move this forward to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend approval of the updated solder range for Act ninety three position for the twenty five, twenty six school year as a result of the P S B A compensation study and appropriate placement of Act ninety three employee in the soldering base upon experience.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? And again, hearing no further discussion on the motion, so we will move this forward to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend approval of the attached update to the twenty five, twenty six fall and winter coaches and game day workers. This item will appear on the October twenty eighth Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? So again, hearing no further discussion on the motion, so we'll move it forward to October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend approval of the memorandum of agreement between Harrisburg School District and Harrisburg Act ninety three administrator related to winter recess as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? So again, hearing no further discussion on the motion, we will move it forward to October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend approval of the memorandum of understanding between Harrisburg School District and America Federation of State, County and Municipal Employee District Council ninety related to the winter recess as presented.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Or any discussion on the motion? So again, hearing no further discussion on the motion.
Question. So the, uh, the interns that, um, the funded interns, what, uh, schools would they be in? Would, would it be in any of our schools or?
You talking about the M O U?
Oh, I'm forgetting.
I think it's the next one you're gonna talk.
Oh, yeah, 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 the next one, I'm sorry.
He was just getting ahead. He's like.
I was going a little bit ahead, yeah, that's good.
Thank you. So again, hearing no further discussion on the motion, we'll move it forward to the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
All right. The administration is recommend approval of the Harrisburg School District Local Education Agency, the L E A application for the P A Mental Health Education Learning Program in school uh, for the twenty five, twenty six school year. Approval allowed the district to host for a mental health intern under supervision of certified staff. This item will appear on the October twenty eighth Board of Agenda.
Now, to, I think, answer, uh, Mr. Carter's question, we did have an intern that was eligible for this. Unfortunately, she did rescind at the last minute, so we're hoping we can get somebody, um, still this school year.
Thank you so much, Lane. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any, uh, further discussion on this motion? Hearing no, hearing no further discussion on the motions, we'll move it forward to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, we will now move to the Office of Operations for New Business Items. Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend approval of the proposal for Martin Tree Service to remove and trim multiple trees throughout the district. Many trees are overgrown, have root rot and are in decline. Building include Camp Curtain, William Penn, Ben Franklin, John Harris, Marrow, Foose, Marshall, Steel and Lincoln. Um, this proposal is through the Coast Star. The contract number is three, seven, one, five, three, three at a total cost of two hundred sixteen thousand, a hundred dollars. Um, this will appear on the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Henry. Um, is there any discussion on the motion? And I, I have a quite, uh, discussion per se on the motion. I did see the amount, but I'm not of a real expertise in removal of trees, but that amount was pretty high. If you can just.
Yeah, so I would tell you, I did go out and visit, um, because I had the same feeling, but we do have a, a lot of trees in really bad condition. Uh, to the point when we was out there, I believe we even saw one that fell recently. Um, so we do have a, a lot of safety concern with some of the trees. A lot of the trees just really overgrown, haven't been taken care of over the years. So I know we have some pictures there and at the bottom, you see where the holes are at, go back aside. Those are where you can see where trees are dry rotting. Now, a lot of the trees that we was able to see, we have a lot of those holes. So it's a lot of those trees are decaying from the inside out. And I mean, we have roughly, well, on twenty trees on the Camp Curtain, uh, William Penn property. Huge trees that are in very bad condition.
Okay, and this is for actually for all of the schools, correct?
Yes.
Okay, for all of us around. Yes, Ms. Hughes?
Uh, thanks. Do we think this will take care of it for a while then?
Yes.
Have to go for a while?
Trust and believe. That's why I went out there because what, with Mr. Reedakade to me about these trees. I'm like, really?
I know.
And but I went out to verify where we was and again, just look at the condition of the trees. That was one of my question is, if we get this done, will we be okay for a while? He, he did assure me that we should be okay for a while. If we're able to maintain our trees over the next couple of years.
Thanks.
And don't let it get this far out of hand.
And hoping that we have some type of agreement. No, I'm just, for them to come back. No. Well, thank you for that, Doctor, uh, uh, Mr. Reedie and Doctor Henry for that explanation. Is there any further discussion on the motion? So again, hearing no further discussion on the motion, we will move it forward to the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting uh, for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend the ratification of a denim with George Craft Junior and Son Inc. This additional will increase the C D L bus driver wage rate by average of three dollars per hour. The additional cost is being shared equity by the Harrisburg School District and George Craft Junior and Son Inc. Um, this estimate increased in cost of the twenty five, twenty six school year by forty thousand. Uh, this item will appear on the October twenty eighth Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. And is there any, uh, discussion on this item? So I just wanted to actually, uh, applaud because I was actually there for the uh, recognition for Kraft and our administrative team. So to see that not only that the work that they do for the safety of our children, also to see that there was an increase to the three dollars per hour rate. So if you could just, uh, share that with our, um, public, just to share how that increase will be impacted to help, you know, our service.
Sure. Uh, we had a recognition at, at event at Kraft. Um, I believe it was two weeks ago in which we shared within the rate increase. Um, and, and during the summer, we met with Kraft because we know that there is a driver shortage. Um, so, you know, I wanted to make sure from Kraft's perspective, we were ready to go at the start of the school year. Uh, and they did. They were able to increase their staffing and they were ready to go. Uh, we have lost a couple of drivers, but it is a very competitive industry. Uh, and as you know, there's some schools around us that have been kind of caught a little bit in terms of, uh, not having the staffing that they needed at the beginning of the school year. So knowing that and knowing where those wage rates were at, I reached out to Kraft and we had some discussions, uh, in terms of a rate increase to make sure that those driver rates were competitive. Um, and they agree, they agreed to take on half the cost or half the increase, uh, for that. Uh, and that's, that's kind of where we landed. So the twenty six dollars an hour, uh, is a competitive rate. Uh, it's one of the largest in the area and it's also competitive from a York and Lancaster area as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reedie. Is there any further discussion on this motion? And hearing no further discussion on the motion, so we will move it forward to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five uh, meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend approval of agreement with the Food Facility Concept, Inc. Food Facility Concept with assist redesigning both the existing serving line at Camp Curtain and the second line being created with the expansion of the cafeteria. In addition, the Food Facility Concept will evaluate any need equipment, needed equipment, replacement and improvement recommended for the kitchen area. They will also evaluate the span of the walk-in cold storage facility and reorganize the dry storage and prep area at a total cost of fourteen, four hundred. Uh, this item will appear on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. And is there, so, okay, for, is there any discussion on those, on this motion?
I do.
Uh, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, uh, Mr. Reedie. Going forward, um, if there is a redesign that's approved, how much do you project that would be in the budget to complete these projects?
Uh, we're hoping, uh, the proposal that we took, I believe in June, uh, is going to cover most of the, the necessary uh, renovations that are needed. Um, but it's, it's certainly something that we're, we're going to have to look at at the time in terms of what's, what it comes up with from the consultant. Uh, we're hoping it's not more than was already built into the capital plan. Uh, because we are expanding, uh, one line, the two lines out, the existing lines out further. And as well as, uh, the expansion of the second cafeteria, there'll be a line there, there as well. Uh, so it's, it's really in the development phase right now, so I, I can't really tell you exactly, but we're hoping that most of what we built into the capital plan in that project is what ends up being in the construction from a cost perspective.
Okay, and can you just explain like the need? Is this because of it expanding as the middle school and there's more students?
Sure. Um, as everyone knows, uh, the plan is for the eighth graders, uh, to move on to uh, high school next year and all of the fifth graders to come into Camp Curtain, except for the ones that go to Marshall. Uh, so Camp Curtain will see an increase in enrollment next year. And this will give, uh, the cafeteria a little bit more space. Uh, right now they have five lunch periods, uh, which is a, a large amount of lunch periods to have, um, even with the amount of students that they have right now. So they're going to get more students. And the hope is to hopefully get them down to four lunch periods, um, with the expansion of the cafeteria. Um, and at the same time, the side cafeteria will also be a little bit enclosed. Uh, so if the principal wants to have, um, let's say maybe the sixth graders in there, um, they can be in a little bit more of an enclosed area as opposed to in the whole group. So that's how the design is working out so far.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there any further discussion on this motion? So again, hearing no further discussion on the motion, um, we will move this forward to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend the following repair at the water main break at the Scott School. Uh, the recommendation is ratification of emergency repair proposed by the Guardian Group to repair the water main at the Scott School. The repair involve a significant, um, escalation of new service line, backfilling the, the whole concrete and repairing the asphalt. This project was through the K P N procurement, um, for a total cost of, uh, one hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and seventeen cent. Um, the second recommendation is for the ratification of proposal for Blue Sky for the remediation and repair of the damaged hallways, bathroom, classroom at the Scott building due to the water infiltration into the building from the water main break, um, for a total cost of a hundred seventy thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. On this amount, the district is only responsible for the insurance deduction, uh, of fifty thousand. This item will appear on the October twenty eighth Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, do we, no, was the water main that broke, was that older and it just hadn't yet been replaced? Or was this something that we recently replaced?
Uh, it was, you know, it was a, a very old water line that broke. Uh, when they got down there, they, they saw all kinds of things. Um, so it was, it was unfortunately, uh, constructed in a, a very interesting way and, um, yeah, it cracked and it, it flooded the, the garden level significantly.
Thanks. I know that you are doing a ton of capital projects and have been doing a ton of capital projects to update the schools. Um, do we have a sense of like how many outdated water mains or pipes we might have in other schools? I know that's kind of hard to, to measure.
Yeah, I think that's, that's very difficult to really measure because you really can't see underneath there in terms of actually knowing, you know, how it, how if this could occur in another building or not, it's, it's very difficult to, to really guess and know that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Uh, Ms. Hughes?
Uh, thank you. Um, so I see we have insurance for the damage. I don't suppose we could get insurance for the main.
No, unfortunately, since it's a repair, it's just like any other repair that you, you do. Insurance is not going to cover um, the, the, the actual repair, but it will cover the damage as a result of the repair.
Okay, we can't, yeah, insure the rest of them in case they crack. No.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Is there any further discussion on this motion? And again, hearing no further discussion on the motion, so we will move it forward to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend approval of the proposal from groundwork to install a sub pump system and discharge line for the prevention of water to end the Scott Foundation. This project is through the Coast Star vendor number five, five, six, five, four, two at a total cost of forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-five cent. This item will appear on the October twenty eighth Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Just, just to touch a little bit about this, this had absolutely nothing to do with the water main break. So
I was gonna say.
You could be, you could, this is just coincidence and you, I'm sure you could be a little confused by that. Uh, but actually on the other side of the building, from when the, where the water main broke, break happened, um, by the cafeteria, we've been seeing water infiltrate in there for many years. Uh, in fact, the cafeteria floor, we, we started a, uh, V C T repair, but it couldn't be done just because of the amount of water coming into the building into that level. So what this will do is this will install a series of pumps to ensure that that water doesn't continue to infiltrate into building. Over the summer, we saw a significant amount of water infiltrate in, again, not from the water main, it hadn't broken by that point. Uh, and we, we realized that, hey, we, we need to do something pretty significant in terms of installing pumps to ensure that this water doesn't continue to enter the building. So that's what this is all about.
Thank you. So is there any, uh, further discussion on this motion? And, um, for Scott, is this, this for Scott? What school is this for?
Scott.
So this is just specifically now, so are there any currently any, because you said this has been going on for some time in this specific building? Has there been any other?
There's no other building that I'm aware of in terms of that type of concern.
Okay. Thank you. So again, hearing no further discussion on the motion, we'll move this forward to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend approval of the attached use of facility request. These item will appear on the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on these items? Or motion? So hearing no further discussion on this motion, we will move these items to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend approval of personal letter of intent with the Capitol Area Intermediate Unit for Ninety-Six V M Ware, the V C M Core License, the C A I U have secure statewide pricing for the V M Ware license with Broadcom at a hundred and ten dollars per computer core, uh, per year. Uh, this new negotiated price would save the district a significant amount each year on licensing re- agreement renewal. The item will appear on the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five Board of A- Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? Ms. Hughes?
Um, can you just explain what this is?
Mr. Reed.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Norenholm for a more specific answer.
No problem. So VMware is the platform that we use to house all of our virtual servers here. It allows us to take one physical computer and run, say, twenty or thirty servers on it. Um, a few years ago, our annual cost for renewal was about this amount. Last year VMware was purchased by a company called Broadcom who tripled the prices for school districts and businesses across the country. Um, so it was a big shock that our renewal last year was about thirty thousand dollars. And this year, the I U did a lot of legwork, got a lot of school districts on board with this to get the price back down. So this will save us about sixty-six percent versus the current year.
Thanks.
Awesome. Well, that was good information. Thanks for sharing that. Um, is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing no further discussion on the motion, we will move this forward to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
Administration is recommend approval of an annual license renewal with Zoom Video Communication, Inc. For the period of December fifth, twenty twenty five through December fourth, twenty twenty six. The renewal cover two hundred end user license as well as one webinar license. This item will appear on the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? And hearing no further discussion on the motion, so we'll move this forward to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration recommend approval of a two-year subscription to LinkedIn Learning to support the professional development of I T department staff as well as district staff. We will begin our pilot with twenty-five license and expand the fifth license in two year. Uh, total year one cost is, uh, seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Total year two is nine thousand dollars.
Thank you. Is there any, uh, discussion on this motion?
I have a question.
Uh, Ms. Anderson?
Yes, thank you. Um, so is this, is the LinkedIn learning specifically for the staff? Or will it also be used to like teach the students how to use it? Or like, how does this program work for the I T staff?
Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, this, this is just for I T. One of the goals for I T this year is to increase its knowledge of professional development, um, and overall to expand their capabilities and knowledge in, in this field. Uh, so this is specifically for I T.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there any further discussion on the item? So hearing no further discussion on this item, we'll move it forward to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Um, we will now move to the Office of Business Services for new business items. Dr. Henry?
The administration is recommend approval of the following twenty twenty-five, twenty-six grant award in amount listed below, uh, for the Title One Comprehensive Support or the C S I. These, all these items will appear on the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any, uh, discussion on these, um, on the motion? So hearing no further discussion on the motion, we will move it forward to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting, uh, for the consent agenda for approval. Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend approval for the renewal agreement with arbitrary sport and arbitrary pay to pay the athletic official at a cost of two thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. This item will appear on the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five Board Agenda for Approval.
Is there any discussion on the motion? So hearing no further discussion on the motion, we will move it forward to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend approval of the agreement of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine to twenty thirty capital improvement plan. This item will appear on the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? And hearing no further discussion on the motion, we'll move it forward to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend the ratification of the following payroll total for September twenty-five. This item will appear on the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? And hearing no further discussion on the motion, we will move it forward to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend approval of the Treasury Report for the period ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five in amount of fifty-four million, nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. This item will appear on the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five Board Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item, on the motion? Uh, Ms. Hughes?
Um, thank you. Um, this is probably too early, but there, there was no, um, adjustments made to this based on the not having a budget yet, right?
So this is basically your bank balance?
Yeah.
So, um, because we do not have a state budget, it is going to continue to get lower than it normally is during these periods of time because we are not receiving state subsidy.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Is there any, um, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing no further discussion on the motion, we'll move it forward to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend ratification of the following checks registered for September twenty-five. These items will appear on the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? So hearing no further discussion on the motion, we will move these items to our October, moving forward to the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Uh, Dr. Henry, next item.
The administration is recommend approval of the following fundraiser for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. These items will appear on the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five Board of Agenda for Approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Uh, now I have a question, uh, regarding just, um, on the, and I don't know if this will be more towards the items, but as for the tickets for the selling, would they just be for children that are in our district? Like how, would have information regards to how children will be able to get the tickets? Like, would it be for the students, given it to our current students or other students will be at this, um, homecoming?
Dr. Thompson.
I'm sorry. Of course you caught me when I wasn't paying fully attention.
Sure.
Give me that again, please.
Yeah. So for the homecoming, the upcoming home, which we know is coming this weekend, um, as for the tickets, cause I have some children just reaching out. They're not specifically from our district. How are the tickets going to be dispersed? Are they only going to be to our students or how is? Okay. So there'll be a list of something we'll have just for the, only while I talk about it, because we know there's a lot of things happening and the security of our children and making sure they're safe. And you know, there's not outside, because we see a lot of, I see a lot of different, you know, activities taking place and making sure that we do, uh, monitor, you know, that area.
Yeah. So the recommendation is that they need to have that form and appropriate I D.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. And that was the only question I had towards it. Is there any, uh, further discussion on these items? So again, hearing no further discussion on the items, we'll move it forward to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting for the consent agenda for approval. Um, we will now move to the Office of Superintendent for New Business.
The administration is recommend approval of attached electronic signature resolution authorizing the superintendent, Dr. Benjamin Herring, to execute and deliver any and all contract agreement grants and license with the Pennsylvania Department of Education using the electronic signature via the Department E Grant System. This is an immediate action item.
Thank you. Um, do I have a motion to approve the attached electronic signature resolution as an immediate action item?
So moved, Ms. Johnson.
Is there a second?
Second, Ms. Hughes.
Thank you. The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Hughes?
Um, how is this different than what you've been doing?
So apparently one of the thing that I'm learning in a system, certain time I'm able to do electronic or sign online and certain system I have to do this E signature and because I never had this resolution done, they always allow, make me go back and do a wet signature and scan it and send it back. So it just become more efficient.
Thank you for that. And, um, we will now, Madam Secretary, how about you? Can you, um, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Radcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson Leader?
Yes.
We have seven yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Hearing majority of the yeses, so that motion will carry for approval. And, uh, we will now move to our policy updates.
The following part is recommended as part of revision as presented for the first reading.
Thank you. So the, again, this items, uh, this evening were presented for the following listed policies for the board's review. As this is the first reading, so no formal action will be taken tonight. Uh, board members are encouraged to review the policy and submit any questions to the administrator prior to the second reading. Uh, this policy will be brought back at the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five board meeting for possible adoption. Thank you. We will now move to our public comments section. And Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments on non-agenda items this evening?
We do not. Yes, you have to sign up for the board. I'm sorry.
You would have to sign before, for any items. And still, I understand that we just have a policy we have to hear to. So we'll, we're still open. So I'll be sure to, you know, share whatever information you do have. Unfortunately, just for the record, um, anytime you have any public comments, you have to submit it prior to the board meeting, or if you come in, you know, early enough. And before we get started, our board secretary would be happy to take, you know, that information, but I'll be happy to still take anything afterwards and provide it if you don't mind. So we definitely don't want to just avoid, because we do appreciate you coming, all of our community here this evening. So that's okay. Yeah. And we actually did also, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we had a public meeting a few months back where we did accommodate, because we knew the city council, um, really conflicted with our meetings. So we did change it at one point. And unfortunately, we didn't have a good turnout. So we end up switching it back. Yeah. So we definitely understand, because some of us wanted to attend the actual city council as well, because we try to work hand in hand locally. So thank you for that. And maybe that's something uh, we can have a further conversation about. But thank you for sharing that. All right. So hearing no further, uh, public comments, we will now, uh, adjourn the meeting for this evening. Um, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved, Ms. Anderson.
Is there a second?
Second, Ms. Johnson.
Favor signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, those oppose? Motion adjourn.